Second workshop on vegetarian process and long-range planning. And we will go first to the Chief Executive Officer.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you especially to Mr. Steve Swybeck, who has been our pro bono consultant through this process. We truly appreciate that. And also, thank you to the public, everyone that's here, all of our community partners. What we'll be doing today is essentially going, taking another part of Phase One that we were working on on February 15th. And Steve will be walking us through that. Just a couple comments on really some of the items that we have dealt with today and over the past couple of board meetings. You know, terms like short-term, long-term, retirement costs, must-have-a-balanced-budget, know-where-to-go, priorities and planning, those continue to come up particularly over the past month. And so, this exercise is not strategic planning. This exercise is not long-term planning, but yet a first step towards that. What we're dealing with right now is short-term, which essentially is between six to 18 months for the rest of this year and next year as far as our budget. That's the short-term planning. And our goal is Phase Two, which is long-term planning. If we don't get through short-term planning, there may not be long-term planning. So this is something that really is of great urgency for us to move forward with. And before Steve starts, what I'd like to say is that if you look at the handout, the chart that the board will be working through with Steve, the budget actions that are listed, the board worked through those during our last session on February 15th. But what we're trying to deal with is the actions that we've taken over the past year and a half or so. So that's why you see very specific actions there. And I think at this point, Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Nice to see you all again. Where Kendall?
I think she's asleep.
Oh, there you are. Looked down at my notes and I looked back up, you're gone. Okay. So I'm thrilled to be back. And I did want to just kind of review what we have done, what we did last time, and then pick up where we are. We have a very short period of time. I understand we have until 4:30, is that correct?
Thereabouts.
Thereabouts. So we'll get as far as we can get in that period of time. The real key is to have the conversations. The format that we're following helps us stay focused and have parts of the conversation instead of getting lost on tangents. But it really is about the conversation that the five of you are having together. As you recall from our last session, maybe we could put up this slide. And for those sitting out there, it's very hard to read. There are some, were there some longer ones, right?
There's actually two charts.
There's two charts.
You have this budget chart, matrix that you'll be working on today. And then you have a longer bar chart that's our general fund allocation.
So we're going to be kind of working off of these two. And it's going to be actually easier to see in your packet than it's going to be on the wall. But I'm going to work with the chart on the wall because that way we can kind of all stay focused together and walk through it. It is going to be a bit laborious in terms of the process, but usually the outcomes of it are extremely worthwhile. Last time, we developed a set of strategies, as you recall. And there are overlaps. It will not hurt the process in the fact that there are overlaps because it kind of falls out at the end. And I doubt very much that one particular one of these will stand out, but I imagine a couple of these will stand out. These being the strategies will stand out prominently. And you, the five of you, will be looking, I assume, in your conversations after this point, kind of how to thread the best, maximize the opportunities, and minimize the downsides. I mean, that's the situation that you're all in. So we developed these strategies, workforce reduction, service elimination, centralization of services, facility utilization, privatization, Monday through Thursday Work Week, which might be a 36-hour full-time equivalent, reduce labor costs, wage concessions, all that's part of the same one, revenue enhancement, cost recovery, and regionalization of services. And then across the top, these were the priorities, the criteria, that you would hope to maximize. And you need to do a balancing across all of those. We did quite a bit of work last time on changing some of those, adding and deleting some of those options, and I'll go through those in a minute. And plus, we created a weighting for each of those, which will allow us to get a weighted factor across all of these strategies. And we did that work in our last workshop. And I think we had some good conversations in getting there. Find my glass, it's hopefully here in my handi-pocket. I'm going to make a facilitator jumpsuit, you know, one of those golf things, everything kind of sticks to it all over. So anyway, when we look at these, the actual criteria, decision-making criteria are reduce, eliminate structural deficit. You said on a scale of one to 10, that was the highest. That's a 10. Create reserves. You gave it a weighting factor of eight. They're hard to read here, so I'm going to go through it for you. Reduce unemployment costs, important, made the list, but it's not as important as the others before. Improve the county's credit rating, five. And of course, this is more in the short term. Improve the local economy, promote jobs, businesses, and healthy environment as a seven. That was one that I think you all added in, if I recall. Improve customer service and satisfaction is about a 5.5. We're exact on that one. I think we actually took the numerical, the mean value there. Maintain core services. And there was a question, well, what are those core services? Minimize service reductions, that was a nine. Minimize county employee job loss, that was a 5.5 on a weighting factor. Good for the short and the long term, that was an 8.5. Increase efficiencies, a weighting factor of 7.5. And the cost-benefit, kind of bang for the buck, we didn't evidently rate that one in terms of getting a weighting factor. And if you still believe that that's key, we should talk about on a scale of one to 10 how important that is. Okay. Questions so far? Is all, comes back? Any comments?
Well, in hindsight, I can see giving a higher rating to improving the local economy. Because in the long run, that's what's going to help us on revenue generation.
Okay. You want to, that's a seven right now on a scale of 10. So what we see about these weighting factors, if there's anybody that, if you can convince John, the group, you want to make a case, that was your case, you could say a little bit more, of course, if you'd like, and see if any of your colleagues would like to shift that from a seven to a higher number.
Well, as I remember, the reason I wasn't higher was because, you know, I think there was some discussion about how, you know, there's only so much we can do to improve the local economy. I mean, we, you know, we are not a socialist-planned county economy. So what we can do is create conditions under which hopefully the economy can expand. And I don't know if that should be a seven or an eight, but I think it was in recognition of the fact that, you know, we don't create jobs per se.
Correct.
Although we are one of the biggest employers in the county.
That's right.
But we're certainly not creating new jobs in the county in this milieu.
Yeah. Well, I agree with that. And I think your explanation is correct of how we got there. But then, I guess I'm maybe thinking a little bit about public perception. What? They don't value improving the local economy any more than that? So...
Well, I think...
But in terms of the chart, probably makes sense.
That's where we need to go to is, here's the way to think about this, or one way to think about it. You can think about it any way you'd like, I hope, as we walk through this. And it made the chart, it was, all of them are critical. Then it's this conversation, it's a forced conversation, they're not all equally critical. And that was, that's the hard part. And within the timeframe, this 18-month timeframe that we're looking at, we have to evaluate that timeframe as well. Because the conversation was, this is Phase One. This is like to get you through right now, this current fiscal year, and the following fiscal year. And hopefully, if you find this useful, this conversation useful, and it actually allows you to make some decisions together based on this work, then we're going to move into this, you, or we, or whatever the board wishes it will be, is to move into a Phase Two, which is much longer term. And there might be other strategies on this list, I'm sure there will be. And there may be, these may be weighted differently for the long term. So it's about the, how critical are these in the very short term? And your case is still just as valid, but we do need to look at that window of time. So anybody else want to weigh in to John's perspective?
Well, I think your point is well-taken, that this, and I think we did have some discussion along these lines, about short-term and versus long-term, the continuum of the long term, and that clearly, the efforts that we make with respect to the local economy and promotion of jobs have payoffs more, that are more in, down the line. Whereas something like creating reserves, there's that concrete decision-making that we hold, that we need to take responsibility for, that either we're going to create those reserves by our decisions or we're not. It's pretty clear. It's pretty cut and dry.
Well, that one too, promote the, what's it say? Promote the local economy, promote jobs, business, and healthy environment, that should be the mission and the goal of this county. And that's not necessarily a budget strategy.
But given that it is up here, you're saying we ought to weight every strategy in its ability to help foster and move us towards that. And that's what these really are. We're trying to do, in a very tough set of circumstances, is to make almost any decision, difficult decision, the best you can make, trying to weight it against these important criteria that you've set up. And so you're making the case of, yes, it definitely should be up there. It's not a strategy, but it's one of the outcomes we're trying to enhance. So Johnny?
Well, going a different way, maybe we might consider putting the Sunnyvale model on the lower tier as a strategy. And the Sunnyvale model increased efficiency, particularly in permitting, but I think it has applications across the board.
Okay. So that's up to you and your colleagues. And what is going, as you're going to see in a few minutes, and I'm not being wishy-washy, but this is really your work. I'm not here to make that decision, and I appreciate you bringing it up. One of the things that you're going to be challenged by today, and obviously, you're already challenged by them, we're going to start with workforce reduction, and then you'll pick, because of our time, you'll pick. Well, which ones else do we want to? We might get them all done today, we might not get them all done today. But I want to make sure you're looking at the ones that you feel might be most different even to get a good start at these.
Most different?
Different from each other. So imagine though, that we're going to, let's say we're going to start with workforce reduction in two minutes. And we're going to say, well, what does that actually mean? Staff has put together some numbers. Then you're going to talk about, is that, do we agree with that analysis? What is our analysis? Because when we weight these, we have to be weighting them through some objective criteria. And what I, what as a facilitator I would be doing is challenging, and you're going to see, we're going to have some hard times when we get to revenue enhancement, as an example, or if we got to efficiency. In a short term, what, how can you guarantee we're going to achieve the gains in the short term? What are the specific strategies, sub-strategies in that? Because your charge, I believe, is to hit this almost seven, $6 million budget shift. And so it has to actually, we have to say, you would make a case, well, this, through efficiency, doing this, 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 we can hit either all of that or a large chunk of that. We're going to do that on every single one of these. So it's not, so you're sharing common definitions as you're weighting these. And I think that's key. We're thinking from the same point. So John, if we can, can we wait to see if that's another strategy to put down as we get to it? Would that work for you?
Yeah, the Sunnyvale model, sure.
Yeah. Okay. Any other? So Carrie, can I come to you? We didn't evidently weight this cost-benefit bang for the buck.
We got left out.
Well, we put it on. It didn't get left off, but we didn't put a number value on it. Do you want to see if it still should be on there? Because I think this was your point.
Yes.
And would you like to advocate why it should be up there and what weighting factor it should receive? And then let's talk about it together.
Actually, I think the role that cost-benefit plays is in every decision we're going to make, what is it going to cost us and what is the benefit of all these others, you know, the exercises, the actions we're going to go through. I think it's a question we have to repeatedly ask ourselves, cost and benefit.
And so the costs, downsides and the upsides in this case?
Exactly.
Of approaching that strategy. And how important is that criteria?
I think it's very important.
So on a scale of one to 10, and I'm, this is going to get very monotonous today, and I apologize in advance, you're going to want, you probably never want to see me again every day, but we'll do the best we can. On a scale of one to 10, knowing 10 is the highest, what would you give it? And let's see if we can arrive at that number. And then we're going to move forward with the exercise.
Well, if we're going to ask ourselves that question on every action that we're going to talk about, or possible action, I would have to rank it at 11.
At 11? Okay.
Because you're going to have to, I mean, it should be above it all, reduce, eliminate structural deficit. What's going to be the cost, what's going to be the benefit? That's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Somebody else want to? So you're saying 11, which is, that's how I like to do things, break the rules, but so a 10?
Well, a cost is a dollar figure. You can attach the cost in a dollar figure. But sometimes you can't put a dollar figure to the benefit. Example, we just talked about the library system. How do you assign a dollar benefit to our library system? It's really hard. So without a clear definition of what the benefit is, I wouldn't even know. I believe, you know, Carrie's right, it should be always at the top of the chart. You always want to make sure that taxpayers' dollars are spent well and they're getting some money. But how you would assign an actual dollar benefit to, you know, we're a service-delivery system. We're not an investment firm that spends money, expects return. We spend money to expect the return of services for the general public out there. So it's hard to...
Hard to rate it.
Hard to rate it or evaluate it. You know, you have, the cost is definitely a dollar cost, but on the other side, the benefit, you might not gauge that in dollars.
Yeah. And would like to...
Yeah, just stated another way, the benefit is often subjective, and I would even say political. You know, it's what, what these five people consider to be sufficient to merit the amount of investment that we're putting in a particular thing. And Johnny's example is perfect. You know, some people would say, you don't need a library in the computer age, you know? Where's your Kindle? You know, what do you need with a book? You know? But, but subjectively, we as a body say, yeah. I mean, we use some objective facts to arrive at that. But finally, you know, same with the museum, same with a lot of things that we choose to do because we believe they're significant in holding the fabric of our community together.
Maybe another benefit, or another better example would be maybe our public health, maybe a vaccine program or something. We know what the cost would be to allocate vaccines and give it to, what is the economic benefit? But what is the social benefit? I mean, how do you determine that? So it's really hard.
So let me ask Carrie, and I particularly am going to ask this of you. If we go through and look at every one of these other criteria in the decision, would we in effect be doing the cost-benefit analysis?
I would think so.
See, that, I'm not trying, but I'm thinking like, well, are these the, all the other consequences you're trying to weigh? All of these other issues, this analysis? And maybe this is not necessary in that sense, if we've got these right criteria to discuss. Some of them are financial, some of them are goals and missions, some of them are social benefit. Just trying to find a intercourse. Yes, so John?
Well, and you're kind of saying, and I think Carrie said earlier, that this is kind of inherent in all of these. And since we've identified that it can be tough to really quantify sometimes what the benefit is, or is subjective, you know, maybe we could just go on the assumption that kind of inherent in the whole exercise, we're going to be looking at the cost-benefit. And maybe we don't need to assign a specific...
Criteria to it. Yeah. That's one of the, I'm actually thinking that. What do you think?
Well, that's fine. Scratch it off.
Okay. Well, I just, let's test it and see. We're going to do one. Some of these will fall off, they usually do, because you end up getting the same exact answer for all of them because, so they didn't actually give you any, it doesn't matter if they're in there, but the ones that you get the same numerical rating for every single one didn't help you make a decision. But let's test it out and say, when we go to the end of this first one, would that help us? Or did we actually fully discuss the idea? So we'll just walk through it together and hang in there together with it. Okay. So I'm ready to roll unless there's some other comments or questions into actually doing the work of evaluating each option.
Steve, could you just do a time check for us?
Sure.
Because we need to keep our eyes on the time because we have an evening session timed.
Yes, I know.
How are we doing?
Pardon me?
How are we doing?
Well, not bad for the 15, 16 minutes we have. We started a little late, so I'm a little concerned about that.
Okay.
So what I want to do is, I want to start off with the first one, just because it is the first one, get a feel for how it works for you. And then take some that you go, well, I'm, we're really curious, and we'd like to do all of these, but I want to make sure that we're getting some that are very different from each other. So you can see if there's value in doing this exercise.
Mindful of the time, I'd like you to also be thinking, as the facilitator, how we engage the public comment, where you think it's appropriate, how we move forward with that.
Okay.
Supervisor?
Madam Chair, I'm also informed that we are not going to need the scheduled closed session. So maybe we could put an extra 15 minutes on this and push our open, other open session back to 15.
I think that's difficult because we've noticed it for the public, but we may just have to short-change ourselves with the break period. Let's see how we do.
Okay. So let's, so I think you know, and your first couple of charts in there, do you want to just flash those up fairly quickly, Carmel?
Right.
And did you want to review those for us?
Just, this is the chart that we presented during mid-year. This just talks about our deficit and 391,000 right now. And then we can assume we're going to have that carryover. And then it's actually the retirement cost increases. So basically, what we pay the employer share for retirement costs, and it's 2 million of general fund approximately. And then the one-time reserves that we used last year that are no longer available to us. So we're looking at approximately a $6 million shortfall as we develop the fiscal year 11, 12 budget. The next slide is just the 891.
For the public, it's important to note that that 1.976 retire cost increases is only the general fund portion.
That's exactly right. The, that's exactly right. Okay. And then, and then you can go to the chart. And as we run through these, I believe Steve's already mentioned, the dollar figure that we have to make for fiscal year 11, 12 is we have to reduce our costs by $6 million to balance our budget.
Okay. So here's my plan, let us just see how it works. We can always get flexible. So I want to look at workforce reduction. So in your handout packet, and this is true for everybody, I think you all have the handout packet, we turn to the page that says workforce reduction. If this strategy by itself, we're just trying to look at them in a pure sense, you're going to end up taking pieces across probably multiple strategies. But if it by itself, you just said, how would you save the $6 million, make up the $6 million deficit? And I don't know if you want to do this, or do you want me to do this, Carmel?
To, very quickly on this, the figure that we've used for an average county employee has been 75,000. With cost increasing, we're now using 80,000. That is an average. Some employees cost more, some employees cost less. So if you look at $6 million, 80,000, it would be, the number of a workforce reduction would be 75 employees, and that would be 75 general-funded, non-revenue generating employees. Those would be the positions we have to eliminate. This is very black and white, we know that, but it's for the purpose of the exercise. But that would define workforce reduction.
Okay. Comment, Karen, please.
I just have a question. Carmel, what percentage of our employees fit this, these two categories?
Well, if you look at, we have a, if you look at the bar chart, I would say, probably, we probably have about 300 or so employees that would fit that, non-revenue generating discretion.
So you're talking about laying off 25% of those employees?
We would be talking about laying off a lot of employees, Supervisor, Andrew, absolutely. Absolutely.
25% of general fund-funded employees who are non-revenue generating?
We have approximately 1,170 employees, about half of them are funded with either state, federal, or grant funding. So it brings us down to a limited number of general-funded positions. And that's why, you know, as I said, it's very black and white, it's just looking at the math. Would we actually look at eliminating 75 positions? I'm not certain that we would do that. I think whatever we do, it may be a combination of...
Well, I think to the CEO, for the sake of the exercise, the way I understand it with reviewing these is, each one of them is addressing a $6 million deficit. So we're just going to have, I think, move through the exercise, knowing that it's not a plan by design, it's not, it's not where we're going, it's just to put it in perspective.
Exactly. That's the purpose, right.
Supervisor, pinch us.
Is a 10% reduction in all employee bargaining groups, is a $5 million savings in general fund, is that a good number?
Approximate, yes.
No, general fund savings?
Well, if you look at our general fund discretionary, it's approximately 15 million and 70,000.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's a good number, $5 million figure.
That's an approximate number, but yes.
So if you take that and achieve that, then basically that brings down your projected deficit to $1 million.
You know, we're probably getting off a little bit from the exercise.
By just the picture.
No, I'm just cutting to the chase.
Well, you have to think about what we've done for this year, and then what we would do for next year. So, you know, we have to really work those numbers.
Well, that's it.
That is next year. Part of 11, 12 is next year.
That's right.
Yeah. But part of the 10%, the current year, because we've already realized it, and that part has not.
That's right.
Do you have a breakdown, like is a one-quarter maybe has been factored in, and three-quarters still not?
We have, just speaking off the top of my head, approximately 1.7 million or so that has not, savings that we'd like to achieve that we have not achieved. And I would ask our HR director if you had any comment on that. I think we're right about there.
That's right, Doc, that's correct.
So roughly, two-thirds has already been accounted for, although we didn't receive the full amount for this current fiscal year.
That's right.
But it gets already projected into the next year.
Yes.
Okay. So now let's walk...
So that's why it would be an additional...
Additional position. And it is very helpful to look at, and let's just say that you're not going to, it's possible you might have one strategy that makes the most sense, but probably not. So if you quit this page of the, was it 75 positions, those ones that we just clarified, and we have kind of a common definition, if you were just to do this, which other agencies are doing? So it's not like it's, whether you want to do that is a whole nother story. And we're going to look at that in terms of how well it achieves these criteria. Okay? So we just walk you through that.
Yeah, but isn't, along with workforce reduction, the Monday through Thursday, the 36-hour work week, or the reduced labor costs?
That's a different strategy.
But it's all basically workforce reduction, it all has the dollars.
These are layoffs. Positions gone, these are not. So that's why they're different. As, as we're going to look at, okay? Are you ready?
Ready. Let's go.
Okay. So workforce reduction, how well, on a scale by itself, and Tim, you're going to be typing this in as we go or somehow documenting this, okay? On a scale by itself of one to 10, one is very low, 10 is very high, how well would it reduce or eliminate the structural deficit?
And we're not saying whether we think it's desirable or appropriate, just will it accomplish that?
No. That's all you have to do, because it'll wash out on the other end of it. You're just trying to look at it totally objectively.
First, it would be a ten.
So that's what we wanna hear from people and say, is that a ten? Does it reduce or eliminate the structural deficit by, by that reduction of workforce? This is where you guys, you get to ten because?
Well, we've just heard that, that the structural deficit represents seventy-five positions. So if we reduce seventy-five positions, we've accomplished reducing the structural deficit. Eliminating them.
I would, I would add to that that I think workforce reductions in the form of layoffs, not that, not stating that they're desirable or anything along those lines. But that it absolutely goes to the core essence of what structural deficits are because they are, it's not a one-time reduction. It, it takes you down the road to further reductions indefinitely. So I would say also it would be for that reason, a ten.
Ten. Anybody wanna weigh in a different number? Cause we're gonna, you're gonna be given a number, you're gonna quickly advocate, we're gonna move through, not whether you support it or not, but just objectively as the strategy. And then it, and it all flushes out when we look across all these different strategies, looking at them objectively. You may not make any of these decisions, but I hope it'll help you make the final decision. Dan, is it a ten or a nine?
A ten.
Yeah, I guess it's a ten.
Okay. John?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that goes a ten.
Carrie?
She was shaking her head. I was watching her. So we're gonna put in there, and I'll rely on you, Tim, to, or Kyle, or both, to just keep track for us. So same strategy, workforce reduction creates a reserve. Will it recreate the reserve?
If you add about thirty to the number.
Right?
If you add a hundred, it'll create some reserves.
Okay, so how, so that's what you're, that's what you're trying to, like, you said, we wanna create a reserve. We need to create a reserve, I believe. You said it's an eight. So what you do in the short and the long term? So you, this is for your kind of...
But Steve, I think, I think if we're using the criteria that I'm assuming that we are, based on the sheet enclosed here, which is workforce reduction with a six million dollar deficit attached, then it's clearly the answer is no. All you're doing is, you're not creating reserves, you're balancing the budget. That's just factual.
And we got to see if any of those end up creating reserve. But you're saying it doesn't by itself create a reserve.
Well, you're gonna realize the savings. If you eliminate employees that you currently have, you're gonna achieve a savings. And then whether we allocate it towards eliminating the structural deficit or building a reserve is going to give us money to do these things. And again, whether that's desirable, whether we be willing to...
I think everybody here in a TV world, they have to hear. You're not advocating for any of these options yet. You're just trying to log your way...
But if box one is a ten, this is a ten also.
So you...
I just see it differently. Maybe it's a semantics issue. But I'm seeing that if we have a six million dollar deficit, that to me is a br... If we've, we're assuming that's taking us to a breakeven point. So we create workforce reductions to equal, uh, six million dollar savings, we're not creating reserves.
Well, we could, with further workforce reduction, we've done build a reserve.
Further, further, yeah.
Yeah, further.
Let me just weigh in here really quickly. If you, uh, were to eliminate the, the cost, the 2.2 in the one-time reserves, you would effectively, for the purposes of the exercise, be reestablishing the reserve.
And that's a total of how much? How much?
Uh, 2.2.
The reserves are included. Because as you recall, we were, um, we took reserves and used them for operational costs and then put in our savings from wage concessions to make up that 2.2. And we're not there.
So if you just, to, to take Kendall's point, I appreciate this. Cause we have to, we have to evaluate exactly the same thing. That we're just talking about enough positions to deal with the six million. It will create, Kyle, a 2.2 million dollar reserve? Is that correct?
Right, because you're eliminating those costs.
Okay.
Well, but for next year, that 2.2 is factored in to eliminating the six million deficit. So we still don't create the reserve. Next year, we would get it, the following year.
We don't throw in any reserves.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's what, that's what you have to see. I'm not, what's, will, will it create a reserve or put you in a...
I don't see how it would.
No, it doesn't.
Well, addition, a sufficient amount of workforce reduction will create a reserve.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know that, do we have a fixed number that we're allowing?
Well, no, no, but what we are saying is minimally, we just tried to give you some realities to the six. That doesn't mean that's all, but you have to weigh these against some. Can some of these even get you the six million dollars, for example? Within the timeframe. That's why we were trying to give, well, this is probably what it would look like. And that's why we came up with those.
Well, so, so I agree that, that it should be a ten. I mean, workforce reduction will create reserves. It will also improve the county's credit rating. I think that's a ten too.
Don't want too much for service.
No, it'll, it'll destroy all that.
Okay, but let's go through it. So, so is it, is it a ten on reserve? This is for the board.
It depends on how you define it. But the way Kyle defined it, yes.
Is it a ten? It doesn't have to be a ten. It could be a...
Nine.
It could be a nine, it could be a six, it could be a five. It's, you know, we're gonna evaluate everyone against the same way of thinking.
Well, I think it should be a lesser number to John McCowen's point because it's, a number of layoffs will create a reserve. But we're needing to hedge that more to do that, so maybe a lesser number.
Okay, so what would you say?
I don't know, an eight.
You can't front-end the revenue anticipated things that happen throughout the year. I mean, so I don't know how you can plug any, anything for reserve. Right now, we have a policy that our, our, any unanticipated revenues are supposed to go back into our general fund reserve, uh, which is, there's been a sum go back into it, but not a lot. But that, that, your reserves is gonna depend on what happens through the year. I mean, you can, how can you project that? I mean, things in your budget, you can calculate if you have so many people working, what that cost is gonna be at the end of the year. But how can you project what things that are unanticipated happen through the year?
You can't, but we're trying to compare apples to apples. And what you're saying is, you said, not you personally, but all of you saying, these are important and we have to weigh all of these in making a good decision. And now we're saying, well, here are the strategies that you've developed so far. Doesn't mean we can't come up with others. How well does it position you for these when you weight them against each other? And it's kind of a tough exercise, John.
And I think you could make the same argument about the structural deficit because we don't know that we're looking at the end of that depending on what the state's gonna do. So all these things are gonna be a moving target.
So how well, I'm gonna push you guys. Is it an eight, is it a seven, is it a nine? What is it?
Pick another. We need to move on. Just pick one.
Yeah, leave it a ten.
Leave it a ten. Dan, what is it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a ten.
You're a ten, Carrie? You don't have to be.
Ten, fine.
Ten, okay. Now let's move, let's move to the next one. So, uh, reduce unemployment costs. How well would a workforce reduction in, reduce unemployment costs?
It would, zero.
I think that's a zero.
It's a big zero.
It's a big zero, okay. So we have a zero there. I'm just asking here. Uh, how well would it improve the county's credit rate? Dan, you already spoke to that one, I believe.
Well, theoretically, it would improve it dramatically.
Yeah, two, a ten, or a nine, or what is it?
I said a ten.
I don't think so because now Muji's has come out and said that they're gonna include your unfunded pension liability in how they value the credit rating. So with that there, I don't think it would, I think it'd be minimal how it's gonna affect.
Well, it's not gonna hurt it, you know?
No, it's not. I never said it was gonna hurt it, but it's not gonna affect it to the positive as much as you would think.
No, but it's, it's a completely positive effect.
I don't think anything in our, our financial institutions is gonna give any government entity a positive, uh, credit rating.
So John, pick a number.
Six, five.
And, and, but you, but again, you're comparing against, it's not just a pick number, but I appreciate the help. But, not that he's being difficult, he's bringing up a great point.
It is a good point, but I think we just, at some point, it's arbitrary, so we just really...
But is it position you on a scale of one to ten? It really positions you well for improving the credit rating? Or it has a zero impact on it, or somewhere between?
Somewhere between.
I think it does.
Pardon?
I think it does.
You think it does?
Yes.
John?
Well, you think it adds positive. Yeah, I, I agree.
So pick a number?
Uh, at least a seven or eight, I would say.
I'd go a seven.
I'm gonna be an eight.
And you're a six, so why don't we...
Whatever. Seven.
Seven, okay, so, so it sounds like seven and a half is good enough. You're gonna wait the same thinking. You're gonna have to remember, you won't be hard. But when we go to the next one, the same kinda logic will apply because you can't apply different logic when we get to that one. So it will work out.
Well, you haven't worked with this before.
I know.
My thinking is the same from hour to hour.
Silly me. Okay, well, at least we're all honest here. That's a good thing. Okay, moving on. Now, you said you wanted to improve the local economy, promote jobs, business, and a healthy environment. And a healthy environment was literally the ecosystem, I think, that we're in, the business environment and the physical environment. That's what you talked about last time. How well would a workforce reduction do that? Does it do it?
It don't do much for promoting jobs.
Well, I can look at it two ways. I think that, um, you know, cutting jobs does not promote jobs. I mean, in the beginning. You're not promoting a healthy, healthy environment by destroying your departments that try to maintain and enhance the environment. But on the other hand, if, if the county government implodes because of its budget deficits, that's not gonna do much good for the local economy either. So, you know, I think, I don't think it's, it's a ten or a zero. I think it's somewhere in between.
No, it is somewhere between. And it probably is somewhere right in between. Is that accurate?
Five.
Yeah, I'm seeing a lot. Carrie, where would you weigh in on this one?
Um, I'm fine with five.
Okay, let's put a five. Okay, and the same logic will apply when we come to the next one. So now, improve customer service and satisfaction. Come on, guys.
Very low. Well, you probably took away some of the, the requirements and, and maybe regulations, so to speak.
But just by itself, assuming that's all you did.
With the reduction in staff.
So...
That's probably a zero.
Probably a zero, or...
Well, I can, I can go for a zero.
Or a negative number.
Or a negative. Carrie tried that with the eleven. Okay, John?
I'll go whatever.
You'll go whatever.
So we'll go zero?
Zero.
Okay.
All right, now. Maintain core services. Now, we haven't had that discussion, but you probably have a feel for those core, the most important service. How well would that strategy allow you to do that, given what we talked about with the nature of the kinds of jobs that you could select from? And I'd like to hear a little conversation just before we give a number, John.
Well, it's gonna depend on how we prioritize the services and what, what we determine are core services. And then if the workforce reduction takes places in areas that we have not defined as core services, then we should still be able to maintain them at a reasonable level.
And therefore, for you?
Well, I think maybe more discussion, but if you want a number, I could toss one out.
Okay, so Kendall?
Well, I, I, I think that we, since we're doing, operating with very minimal information and we have the criteria, these have to be general fund positions in order to create the savings, that's gonna drive the discussion about who could be cut. And I would say, I would say that a lot of those are probably inevitably going to be still defined as core services. Not all, but some. So I don't think I would give it a very high number.
Okay. Dan, what's your?
I need to think a little more. I'm having trouble with that. I think it's hard to define core services, you know, to begin with.
Well, we're gonna get into that when we get to the service elimination. I'm sure it's gonna come up again. But you will get through this exercise and it will give you some answers and directions. And it is a frustrating exercise, but it's useful to hear each other talk about your meaning, how you think each decision will impact against the criteria that you're looking for. And I, and I apologize for putting you into this, but it will be useful on the other side. John, you wanna take a shot?
Well, I think Dan's exactly right. It's how do you find core services? For instance, if you, if you done workforce, workforce reduction and done it all in, say like Department of Transportation, you'd bring this county to a standstill? Of course, it's not a general fund. It's not general funded, so, uh... I'm, I guess in light of that, somewhere in the middle. Like Kendall said, somewhere in the middle.
Wanna offer a number?
Five.
It's a five word?
John?
I was actually thinking seven or eight again. It depends on how we define core services and where the layoffs actually hit.
So to make it that high, you had to be, you had to really together define collectively what you mean by that.
We're going to have to do something other than adopt an across-the-board strategy.
That's exactly right.
See, you know, I think we, we have to remember, and I, I overheard, I have to remember we're not, we're talking about core services, mostly that are general fund funded. You know, like I started thinking, well, we're about to eliminate family planning. That's a core service. We're eliminating mental health like crazy. That's a core service. But those are, those are not general funded. So then I started thinking, well, let's get rid of the planning department. Let's get rid of the, let's get rid of the assessor and, you know?
Sheriff.
Uh, the sheriff and the treasurer. You know, those are all core services. We can't function as a county without those administrative services that people like to think of as, oh, that's just the bureaucracy. But, but really, that's what keeps our county moving from day to day. So it's, you know, it's pretty dicey.
And yet, we're gonna likely be forced into a position where we're having to make priority decisions.
Right, but that's why I wouldn't give it a seven or an eight. I'd give it more like a four or a five, at best.
And I agree, because of that conundrum you're talking about, there's no kind of easy way to move through this to core services identified with general fund. So...
So out of this, on the other side, could easily come some principles that you would agree on about how you approach the decisions you make. For example, and of course, I'm, are we gonna make? I'm not suggesting that right now and to sidetrack you, but I think it'd be very interesting on the other side of this.
But it's a lot more complicated than that because, okay, you talked about general fund. The jail is general fund. But yet, we have mandated requirements that we have to meet in there. So, so that even eliminates that. I mean, you know, there's...
So it's lower than, I mean, you're...
I guess what I'm trying to say is not as simple as the chart.
So, so you'd say it's lower than a four or a five, though?
Uh, let's go to the middle.
Is it a four or a five, John? You're saying seven, but you're...
John, it's a seven.
I know. I'm just coming back to you. Carrie, and it's complicated. It's not guaranteed. It would require, be higher, you're saying requires us...
We could go with a five.
Kinda like the lottery pick a number.
We'll go with five.
I, I still say it's higher. I, I agree with John McCowen because Supervisor Hamburg, when you look at, um, the discretionary funds of the general fund, but you look at the departments like Public Health Administration, you have Medical Emergency Service. I mean, when you, when you look at the overall with that, family planning is connected in some ways. I mean, that's not where the financing may come from for family services, but yet the oversight and the way we're structured does. So I, I think I would maintain core services. I'm with Supervisor McCowen. And so we're having a five and an eight, so let's settle on a six or a seven.
It's not gonna be, one little number is not gonna make a difference.
Okay, so we'll go six.
Six.
Okay, six.
All right, so, next, minimize county employee job loss.
Zero.
Zero. Yep, that's pretty clear.
That was an important criteria for you, so we did the value. It's good for the short term and the long term, so this takes care of the deficit, let's say, and it's going to put you in a better position for all of the objectives you want to achieve for the long term.
It's gotta be a nine or a ten.
Pardon?
I'd give it a seven.
Gotta be higher than that.
So you think it will position you for the long term?
Well, yeah, we...
If it solves the...
Yeah, with our projections and our outlook out there, as far as attention contributions and all that, I mean, it's, it's increasing, so that leads into the long term.
So...
I think I'm having trouble with the word "good." If the word was necessary, then I might.
You, you, that's fine, I mean, these are the words we came up with last...
I know, I know, but it's not, it's not good.
How about a nine?
It's ineffective, it's ineffective. Nine, what do you, what do you say, John?
I could go with a nine.
You're high on that, too, Kendall?
I, I would actually say a little lower, because I think it, it's very applicable for the short term, we know exactly what it's doing. For the long term, in terms of the solvency of the county and the relationship to all the communities, the continuing need to talk about core services, which we're having a difficult time defining and linking those to general fund savings, I think it, I think it's a little less clear for the long term, so I, I'd go more like seven or eight.
It's how you define long term, too.
I mean, so when you're on the other side of this recessionary effect, that's what you're thinking about, long term.
And there's also needs to be the actuarial projections on how you're paying for your retirement costs already promised, in, in that salary scenario, as you play that out, and there's a lot to be looked at there.
So you're seven or an eight, Carrie?
Um, I, I weigh in with Supervisor Smith at a seven or eight.
Okay, and we might raise up, does it answer our idea?
I'm, I'm more than, I'm with Carrie, seven or eight.
Is what, seven or eight, so it's probably closer to about a five out of eight, actually. Increases, increases efficiencies in the system.
I'd be below five. But again, it's gonna depend on where you make the cuts, potentially.
But overall, losing seventy-five employees is not gonna make us more efficient, it's gonna make us slower.
It's going to make us, it's going to force us to become more efficient.
Yeah, maybe.
Or we really collapse.
Maybe, or maybe it's just gonna make us slower.
Smaller, and slower.
And smaller.
But it could, you're right, John, and that's quite what you wanted to look like, look at with this other model, but by itself, from what you know, will it increase efficiency or keep it the same or decrease, that's what you're evaluating, and you said, I'm only going on, these were the criteria you said that we wanna walk this fine dance when we make a decision.
Presumably, it's going to, you know, force further consolidation, things like that, it's gonna force further reexamination of administrative ratios, you know, to line staff, so, you know, it's, it's mixed, it's gonna be real challenging, but, you know, I, I could see it being in the middle rank.
Okay, Kendall?
A, a middle, yeah, I think it's a mixed situation, I agree.
Okay, so does that mean around five, I guess?
Yes.
See, what's interesting is you're, what's starting to emerge is people are speaking to their whole picture of what they see. If you, as you listen, John's, and if it's fair for me to say this, you're envisioning there's core services, we're gonna make the strategic decisions around core services, we're gonna build consolidation, we're gonna move towards efficiencies, that's the kind of vision that you're putting together as you're forced to go through this conversation. Might've always been there, of course, but it's emerging from each person, and that's a good point, because ultimately, that's what we'll be working off of. Okay, so we finished one, the next one will go...
Well, you were gonna say when we got to the end, did we wanna look at cost benefit?
Yeah, you think we've done cost benefit by looking at all, across all of those variables?
Let's keep that one blank.
Carrie, you think we, by looking at those...
You know, I scratched it off, because I thought that was the consensus.
But that, we did say we double-checked, and say, by looking at the conversation we had, and looking at these variables, these decision variables, are we, do you believe we're attempting to look at all the pros and cons across a decision, because that's what the cost benefit is?
She scratched it off.
She scratched it off, okay.
She's done with it, it's been...
She's done with it, I have to learn to work with each of you, okay, that means I'm done. Okay, we're, we could go through all of these, and we will, but with time, we might not. What would be a very different one would intrigue you to analyze using the same logic? Which of these other strategies?
Let's do the thirty-six-hour work week.
Okay, how's that work for people? It should be an interesting comparison.
Sure.
Okay, is everybody fine with that one? Dan, you're holding your head, you ready to go?
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
You're thinking?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Let's do the thirty-six-hour work week, but we have to use the same logic you used here, it's not a different logic, so, the thirty-six-hour work week, Campbell?
Just to be very clear, for, for those that have looked at some of these and think they're all the same, this is a thirty-six-hour full, Sino County has full-time employees that are forty hours a week, we get our salaries at forty, accrued at forty hours a week, we get all of our benefits accrued at forty hours a week. This example, the thirty-six-hour FTE, is saying that, based on whatever action would be needed, that we would have a full-time employee at thirty-six hours a week rather than forty hours a week. So basically, your salary is at thirty-six hours a week, your benefits are at thirty-six hours a week, so it definitely saves more money, it's very different than voluntary or mandatory time off, because you're saving on benefits as well. And for the purpose of this exercise, we're talking about going to a Monday through Thursday work week, now, we know about half of the county is on Monday through Thursday, but they're at forty hours a week. This would be saying that we would do a Monday through Thursday schedule, the county would only be open Monday through Thursday, except for those twenty-four-hour facilities and emergency services.
But nine hours a day, nine-fourths.
Yes, yes, that's what we're saying.
So like, the planning department would be open from eight till six.
Right, and, and again, this is the example, it's a very concrete example, and, and that's what we're looking at, I, I don't know, Supervisor McCowen, did you have a question?
Well, it's to your last point, it's, it's not going to work for the jail, for juvenile hall, for the sheriff, coroner, for child protective services, so there's clearly positions that model is not gonna work.
That's right, and so, five million is the figure that we had used, it may be a little high, because we wouldn't be talking, we're not talking about twenty-four-hour facilities.
Well, you know, the jail and sheriff alone are about fifty-five percent of this, so that knocks out more than two-point-five million, so it's...
Well, you're, you're including a whole department, and this is speaking to twenty-four-hour facilities, so it would be your choice if you include the whole department or not.
This is definitely four days a week, on Monday through Thursday, it's not a short Friday, it's not a four-hour Friday.
And obviously, that would be the choice of this board, and...
Well, yeah, there's a lot of facility closure, but there's a legitimate saving there, too.
Monday through Thursday would give us the, we're thinking would be the, the best choice, and then...
And we don't have no problem working on that ninth hour during the day?
No, we've done it before.
But then going through the, the exercise, we have to keep in mind, it's not gonna get us a five-million-dollar savings, it, it'll get us, you know, something less.
It would get, it would give us something less, unless this board, if you opted for a thirty-six-hour, uh, full-time employee, and then those departments or employees who could not do a thirty-six hour, there was something that was comparable to make up the difference, so you, you still had that, that savings throughout the departments.
And I was gonna ask you if your five-million-dollar figure had already put in an alternative form of, uh, contribution from those that, well, couldn't, this wouldn't apply to...
I can, I can tell you, over the past year, we've looked at this a couple times, and what we looked at was, most of the employees going to thirty-six hours and those that could not, there would be some type of negotiated, um, uh, reduction in, in salary and benefit to make the difference.
And you have, so that's where you would go, it'd be further cuts in salary and benefits for those positions?
It would be something, I'm, I'm not certain, that would have to be something...
Rather than a recognition that it's simply impractical?
Well, that, that would be your choice.
Basically, a thirty-six-hour work week is the same as a ten percent salary reduction on a forty-hour, based on...
Salary benefit reduction.
Right, but if you applied the thirty-six-hour work week to the twenty-four-seven positions, then you're paying overtime.
Well, if you reduce them ten percent, you get the same net.
Right, but then they're being penalized because they're in a twenty-four-seven position.
No, they're paying...
Well, this would work out later, but I just wanted to know what, how you got to the five million right there.
So the point is, I think John raises a great point, and there, the question that came up is, well, how would that be adjusted to get to five million, and there would need to be some adjustments, which would be up to the board.
And you could have this just bare bones, in other words, those employees that weren't thirty-six hour would be just those twenty-four-hour facilities, not necessarily all employees in that department, so you really could get it down as far as the number of employees that could not go to a thirty-six-hour FTE.
So let's look at it with the same, all right, you go a little faster, but with the same logic you had, like, gee, I couldn't define this, it'll be the same in this particular area, or we were looking at it this way, we need to look at it through the same lens as we did through the first time, so that we're comparing them equally. So, looking at the thirty-six-hour work week, which is down here, how well would that thirty-six-hour work week create or eliminate the structural deficit?
Sounds like it's about a six. Draw out a number.
Others?
Six is fitting, yeah.
Doesn't get the whole, but it gets, goes away towards it, it's a big chunk by itself, right?
Yeah, in comparison to the one we just did, is not as efficient, it's getting the structural deficit down, so I'd say a seven.
Say a seven?
Uh, given the unknowns, I'd say five or six.
I'd say a five or six.
Okay, sounds like we're about six so far, isn't it?
Sure.
Dan, wrap that.
Mm-hmm.
It's okay, let's, oh, you're sorry, that's our six, so let's go to the next one. Creates a reserve. Same logic you gave before, does it put you in a position, that's the question, or does it take away from creating a reserve, it's gotta be that same logic you had before in terms of a workforce reduction?
Probably five.
I don't think it would do it in the eighteen-month time period we're talking about. Maybe, maybe in a longer term, it would.
Five?
Well, I, I think the same as the first call, to me.
Five, six?
A six.
Six, okay, that's what it sounds like you're saying, and Carrie, I'm just checking if there's any differences with you, you good with that? Okay, now, let's go to reduce unemployment costs.
That should be a ten, wouldn't it? I mean, it's not gonna reduce them, but it's not gonna add to them, so... Because we're not laying people off under that scenario, but then it's not a total solution.
It's not, but it's not quite a total solution, but it's, that's correct, that's why you could have...
So we could factor that in, and then say eight or nine or something, or seven or eight?
Yeah, I'm looking for others.
Eight.
Eight? Kendall?
Well, the actual criteria is reduce unemployment costs, and it in and of itself doesn't really do that, so I don't think it deserves a very high number.
You've got a way that, the same way, the same logic you used the first time.
Well, it reduces the cost in it in the sense that we're not going to have the cost based on that action.
Right. That's true, you won't have a cost.
So unemployment...
Yeah, so it's a high number, right?
Yeah.
Seven, eight, nine.
Seven.
So we had what, where did we start with, sorry?
We started with eight.
Eight, and you said, John, that's a seven? Eight? Eight?
Eight.
Eight?
Seven and a half.
Let's call it a seven and a half.
So we...
Okay, next one, improve county's credit rating.
You know, I'm gonna go back to that, I, I think the average would've come out more to an eight than a seven, five.
You wanna average it out?
Yeah.
To an eight?
Well, it could be eight or nine.
Well, which one do you wanna be? On nine, now it'll come out higher.
He says a nine, so...
Are we naming it, or what?
No, I think when we went down the line, basically...
Okay, so John, you were a seven.
He was a seven.
Dan, you were a...
I was an eight.
Eight?
Seven.
You were a seven and a half, I think.
No, I said, I was offering a comp, no, I offered the compromise, because it is gone, it was not my number.
In this business, when you call, why should lose, Kendall?
Three eights and two sevens.
What did I give you, a seven and a half?
Seven-point-six-seven.
Okay, let's call it seven and a half.
Okay, uh, was I the advocate for efficiency?
Yes, you were.
Improve local economy, promote jobs, businesses, business, and a healthy environment. You're gonna stumble on the word promote.
Credit rating, credit rating.
Pardon?
Credit rating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Credit rating, improve the county's credit rating.
Yeah, give it a five, six.
Five or six?
Five or six.
Okay, John?
Yeah, six.
Okay.
I agree with a six.
Okay. So very, that, that's...
Let's do a six.
Let's do a six, that's good, okay, next one, improve the local economy, it's really about how it impacts jobs, business, and, and the health of the environment, this strategy, and you're, and you're really doing it with the same kind of thinking as before, which was, um, in your conversation about workforce reduction, you said, well, you know, it does certain things positive and has some negative downside, how about this one, using that same logic?
Well, it'll take away a little bit, because if they go to basically working four days, well, even nine hours, it's still gonna give them, like, say, like, that Friday or something to, to go out there and compete, and maybe take somebody else's job on a Friday that, that, so you're gonna take all these people and put them into, out there looking for a job on a Friday, competing with somebody else that might want a job on a Friday, so it's, uh, it's, it's, mine, it's gonna be kind of a low number.
Four?
Well, I would put it in the middle, probably.
I would say it would be a little higher than our one above, which is a five, because it's maintaining some jobs which puts, you know, we're, we're keeping people employed and they're, they're spending their money in the community, so I would say a seven.
Yeah, I'm more inclined toward what, what Kendall was saying.
Yeah. Carrie?
Um, I agree with Kendall.
So we're, we're back on the sevens, but John, you're about, well, both Johns, you were lower.
I would've been a five.
You would've been a five.
I would be lower, too, but seven's fine.
So it's like, it's a little higher, it's about a six and a half, would you agree? Something like that, okay, let's move on.
So are we at a six and a half?
Yeah.
Six and a half, I'm on that one.
Improve customer service and satisfaction. Think about it, it's a four-day, if you do it that way, it's a four-day work week, but...
A lot of people are not gonna be happy that they can't get whatever it is they need on a Friday, so I don't see how it's gonna improve customer satisfaction.
I don't think it's gonna hurt that much, once they people know, just like people know they can't get any county services on a Friday.
Well, I can't get my inspection on a Friday, now I'm hung up.
You can't get your inspections in the rural areas of the counties any day you wanted anyway.
Well, let's get...
Maybe here in Ukiah Camp, when you go to Coco, you gotta schedule for the day the inspector's gonna be there.
I would, I would give it a low number.
But you have to give it a better number than workforce reduction.
Than zero.
Zero.
I could give it a two or a three.
Yeah, well, that's what I can, you know, I would go maybe three or four, but it's definitely better than, you know...
Losing seventy-five people.
Yeah, losing seventy-five people.
Is, is it better, is four days a week with full staff, in terms of service, better than five days a week with seventy-five fewer people, that's your question?
Yeah, 'cause at least when we're open, they can get the service, you know, if those days were open, they'll have...
So, so what is it?
Three, three and a half, four.
Four.
Four, or even a four, go for four, okay, let's move on. Where are we going, uh, maintain core services. That's really what you, minimize service reductions, am I in the right spot?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so, you have four days a week, full staff, if I'm understanding this option.[1728.34]
I could give that a higher number, like an eight or a nine, maybe.
Higher, higher than a six.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, first of all, we're not, we're not full staff. I mean, now.
Now. I understand. But when you're looking at them, we're looking at them relative to each other with the same criteria.
Yeah.
So, that was a six, and this is a what? You said a hot, is it eight?
Give it an eight.
Eight? You're saying, okay, is that an eight? All right, let's move on, I know you're getting tired. Minimize county employee job loss.
It's a high number.
Like a nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine's fine.
Nine's fine, okay. You good with that? And, good for the short term, and then, and maybe good is not the right word, and I apologize, but it's, and it positions you, it has the impact that you're looking for in the short term, and doesn't, and it's good for the long terms in terms of the flexibility that allows you. Doesn't eliminate options, that's really what you're saying.
Same as a eight.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
What did we have up there? I haven't had my losses.
Eight, eight, sorry.
So we're going to give it the same as workforce reduction?
Does it create, when you think about your system, your county, I'm not trying to advocate, but here's the, I think this is the way to look at it, is you have seventy-five fewer employees in the one option, and you look at the short term, it got you your, the immediate need, but how does it allow you to address the needs of the future? And the same situation applies to, if you had a four day work week with those, without the loss of the employees.
Well, I'd give it higher, because here we're retaining the employees, so if conditions change, revenue increases, we could go back to the, you know, full work week. So that gives us an edge in the long term. So I could see it being a nine.
Yeah, it just seems to me there's not enough spread between the workforce reduction eight and this one, and I agree with John that this one should be, is considerably better option for, um, for both the short term and the long term.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe the other one is like a seven.
I feel like the other one should go down a little, and this one should go up a little.
Yeah.
Either way, either you just, but, so you're saying that would be a seven, and this would be a nine or something? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Do you find that, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that. And, uh, increases efficiency, but you've got to apply that same conversation, because, I mean, you already have all of these people working for you, right? The same numbers, four days, versus fewer people, five days. I don't know how, unless you're measuring that, but go ahead, John.
Again, that probably should be a higher number than the workforce reduction, because with more employees, it's easier to cover for people if they're out sick, or, you know, vacation, whatever. So, whatever the number is, it should be higher.
Higher than this one.
Seven.
Yeah.
Seven?
I agree. Well, what is that one? I kind of got my glasses.
This one here?
That's a five?
Five, sorry.
Yeah, I agree.
Seven, okay.
And the concern on the top one is it possibly could implode if you remove that many employees, and so obviously this is an improvement, oh, that scenario.
So it's interesting, just looking at those two options, you already can see. And we probably have time to do one more. Does that work for you, sell the energy? To do with one more, I mean, I think it would be good for you to do all these. But which would you take that again would be very different? Because right now it's useful to see. What's, what's a completely different strategy that you would like to evaluate? Whether you agree with it or not, but you can begin to see how it rates out.
Revenue enhancement and cost recovery, because the others are all constriction, and that one is a different, a completely different concept.
Is that okay for, for the rest of you, or would you like to add a paper here? I know you want to do them all, but we have time for one more.
Just a comment I'd like to make on revenue enhancement. You can't do that in the area of fees, because fees have to be only charged at the rate that it costs. If there's more fees, that means you're going to have to tell more people to do more services. So you can't use, uh, fees as revenue enhancement.
Well, but as slash cost recovery, because sometimes we've got fees where we're not recovering the cost.
Tell me where that is.
Environmental health. For one.
You know, we have, we have fee increases come forward every year.
I can make the environment, the argument environmental health improve to you. The, the, the cost that they charge for inspections at restaurants, they multiply it at time, four times a year. Nobody ever gets inspected four times a year, but that's, that's at the rate they're charged at. So I would disagree that environmental health is an area.
Well, we'll be getting the information, but they clearly documented that they don't do cost recovery in a multitude of services they're currently providing. The only reason I suggested it, it is in, it's very much in contrast to what we've been talking about, which is what you were recommending.
Why don't we run through the line?
Let's run, but let's, before we do, like we did before, well, what do we, what do we know about that? And this is part of this conversation you're having right now. So let's, Kendall, do you want to walk us through this one?
Yeah, that'd be fine. The revenue enhancement and cost recovery was an action that this board requested on February fifteenth. We did not have it up there for this reason. If you look at the action, basically what we're saying is, we have to receive an additional six million dollars between the next six to eighteen months. So, um, that, that's your definition of what you have to work with, with revenue enhancement, cost recovery. You have to achieve an additional six million dollars in revenue within the next eighteen months.
Revenue enhancement, potentially, well, next eighteen months, that would work. Well, no, we could do a special tax measure. So there could, there could be a half cent sales tax increase dedicated to particular uses.
Well, if you look at what we just talked about earlier today, moving forward a sales tax measure in November, should it pass, a special tax, should it pass, then that would commence in January, no, I'm sorry.
They don't start April.
In April, so you would have one quarter of the year with the additional tax revenue.
But it would carry forward.
You wouldn't receive the revenue until June.
Right, so I need to, would that one just fail? We just had one fail?
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't get it until the last quarter of eleven, twelve. So for twelve, thirteen, you would have it, but you would still be looking at about a four million dollar shortfall that you'd have to mitigate.
Well, Carmel, I think you're making the point that this is not a real effective one for a short-term strategy. It might be a good discussion for phase two. It's good, yeah.
It's a phase, that's why we took it off, but you wanted it on.
So maybe, Steve, if we just very quickly look at the definitions, like we just walked through this, and then the board can decide which one they want to do, if they wanted to revenue enhancement, or...
We can do revenue enhancement, but you're seeing it's going to, this, you're going to, the scores will be very skewed right now, because you can't achieve through it probably what you need to achieve when compared against the other. But longer term, that's a whole nother score. But you have to hit this in the short term.
So if you look at centralization of services and facility utilization, these are examples. The coast planning department is approximately six hundred thousand. If you centralized, eliminated that service on the coast, you would save about six hundred thousand in general fund. Centralizing Ukiah services would mean looking at all the vacant buildings, and we know that our GSA director's coming back on April fifth. This is just a rough number thrown out there, approximately three point six.
But that's centralizing what is already in Ukiah, that's not shutting down.
It's not shutting down Willets and Fort Rag and moving to Ukiah. If you move to the next one...
Do you believe that number?
It's a, it's a rough number, Supervisor Pinches, I, I think that we'll know more after our GSA director...
Because here a month or so ago, you used the million dollar figure in that category.
To centralize Ukiah?
No, it was just basically piled out a figured sheet on a list of the million dollars.
Right, and so this...
Now, this is just centralizing Ukiah services?
Right, this would depend on the...
And a three million dollar figure? What would it be for the whole county?
This would depend on the extent of the Ukiah services, if we move them, if we sold off a building, if we weren't paying our leases, there's a lot that goes, and then, of course, there would be a staff reduction. So there's a lot in that three million dollars. So, uh, centralization and facility utilization, this is the best we have today. We'll know more after we have our analysis by our GSA director. So, to move forward, privatization, essentially, again, we're dealing with six million dollars. What we're saying upfront, not all services could be privatized, but the county could review the statutes to determine which services could be provided by the side, the private sector. Government benefits being a large percentage of our cost, particularly our retirement costs, community-based organizations may be able to provide services for less cost with the same quality. If we look at the average cost of a county employee at eighty thousand dollars, a nonprofit organization on average sixty thousand dollars, we may be able to provide a comparable service by public-private partnerships or contracting out to our community-based organization. And those were figures that we used as an example. The next one is the thirty-six hour work week, which we brought through.
Kendall, may I ask, would you get that within the same eighteen month? Could you achieve that? I mean, we have to compare each one to each one.
We have to quantify.
Yeah. So...
It would, it would depend on, um, on which services we privatize to achieve that savings in eighteen months. And then reduce labor costs, which is next, which we know, again, calling for an additional wage concession from the employee bargaining unit. A lot drove into this, there's a lot of time and effort. A ten percent wage concession, approximately a five million dollar savings. This is in addition to what we've already done. And then if you move to revenue enhancement, and then regionalization of services is another one that we could not quantify for today's workshop. We would be creating regional models with other counties, streamlining, it would depend on what services we could regionalize. To give you an example, that, um, an example, say the public health officer. Sonoma County has a health officer and an assistant health officer. If we contracted with Sonoma County for twenty hours a week of their assistant health officer, is that something we could do for half the cost of a full-time health officer here? So, it would require working with the departments, working with other counties, and certainly other counties right now are all looking at regionalization of services. This is not anything that just Mendocino County is looking at. So those are your, but, your strategic actions, and, um, up to which one.
Just for the public, um, many times when we're looking at that, we also have to look at what is mandated by both the state and the federal government about being able to do our regional program.
That's right.
Regionalization would also potentially include shared services with the city?
Uh, shared services with the city is, is an action that we could take. It's not necessarily the definition of regionalization today.
So should we say shared services slash regionalization?
We had it, we had it up there, we had shared services up there, and we took it off. So it, it's up to the board, if you'd like to look at regionalization and shared services in one, we certainly could do that. Uh, again, it's hard to quantify what that would be today, and remember, if we're going to do shared services with the cities, the cities have to agree as well. I can tell you that I've had discussions with all of the city managers, and we're all open to whatever option is going to continue to provide the best service.
So can we add that then, regionalization and shared services?
I think we, that was part of the intent originally, to look at all those models, but...
I think though, Steve, you're looking for some, you're looking at things that are quantifiable, that's why we picked workforce reduction.
Well, all of them.
FTE.
For example, all I was trying to do is say, what would it take? You know, it's a wonderful thing to say, well, regionalization, can we move on it? I mean, it would require a lot, I think would, you know, you don't need my opinion, I'm not trying to advocate for or against.
Well, it's not something you can pin down any better than shared services either.
No.
I mean, it's, it's a concept.
It certainly is a longer term, we're absolutely certain, but, and it could be. You might want to, just right now, in this timeframe, you might say, well, it would, it would mean these kinds of things immediately, and then evaluate it in, within that shared frame of mind. That's all, we all, we all have to be thinking of the same things when we're evaluating, otherwise this doesn't work.
I think the logical in the service elimination, because we, that's quantifiable, and there's a chart, and we can, we're going to have to go towards that anyway.
And we also want to get input.
In the public, Supervisor Pinches?
Well, on this free, regionalization services, there's also large, four years ago when I first come on this board this time, this county spent between three and four hundred thousand dollars and looking for a site to build a new, half a billion dollar criminal justice complex. And in my, you know, we didn't have the money, and they said, well, they're going to get it by grants, or loans, or taxes, or whatnot, and they didn't. But the, the point of it is, that was when the regional, regionalization effort should have been looked at, and talked to Lake County or whatnot about like combining with a, with a jail, either expanders or something. That would be more cost-effective and doable than to say that Mendocino County could afford another brand-new jail. I mean, that was something, and hopefully that has been about four years ago. We could have used that three or four hundred thousand dollars and moved the process quite a ways along. What, what did we get for that four hundred thousand dollars? Nothing. So that's where regionalization on large projects for the long term makes sense.
Totally. Several of these are superb long-term strategies. And you just, and there might be pieces that you want to start with, and we should evaluate every one. But Kendall is saying, within our time, maybe we should just, any one will do. I think, I think it will be useful to look at them all. And it does move quicker once you, as you can see, once you get in the flow. Do you want to take, do we have time? You have the time to take one more, or do you want to take?
I think we have time for one.
Let's do one.
Okay, is service elimination okay for, for any folks? Okay, so let's work through this, and then we want to make sure we have plenty of time for public input, and Kyle, and, um, can you, can you, are you quantifying it? So you end up, what you end up doing is you end up multiplying.
So Steve, let's, let's do a time check again. When would you like to conclude?
It's, that's up to you, I, I have...
Well, we have another meeting in six, I think we, we've had a long day already, and we still have an evening. I think we need at least an hour break, but, so I would like to target, you know, before five. But I think we still have thirty minutes. Yeah, half an hour.
So let's, let's keep moving, but let's...
Oh, we do?
Kendall, I think, I think folks are going to have a lot to say. It's my, it's my sense. So, is that accurate?
Let's, let's pick, let's pick one that doesn't involve eliminating stuff.
So which would that be?
Privatizing. It could be, uh, centralization.
It doesn't matter.
Well, I think we need to go right to elimination, because that's what we're probably going to need to be talking about now. Why would we not want, I don't know...
No, we're going to get there eventually.
Well, let's go through it, let's do, let's get with it.
Elimination? We'll do, let's see if we can, I think you're going to do both of them. How many, just really quickly, so I don't, you care, Kendall? You care which one we do?
I don't care what it is, no.
You care which one we do? You care which one we do?
Yeah, I want to talk about some...
I care, let's get with it.
Okay, which one?
Service elimination.
You've got your orders.
Service elimination, uh, reduce or eliminate the structural deficit. Service elimination, our slide, uh, how much, Kyle and Carmel, were we going to, you could get on service elimination, the slide that we had?
That has to be a ten?
Well, this is, uh, there's the, the two slides are there with service elimination. We need six million. If you look at, if you look at this slide, you can see the red, this bar graph, you can see the red bar is the six million dollars. So, we would have to eliminate six million in services to balance, if this was all we did.
Yeah, so if we're doing that, we're really eliminating six million in positions, is what we're talking about. So it has to be, so it's the same thing as workforce reduction.
You're strategically not just doing it across the board, you're doing it by service with the positions that come with it, different than by dispositions.
I think, I think. Well, it could be across the board. This board doesn't have a great history of prioritizing.
But this would be picking the services that you eliminate, this option, and the positions that go with it, I'm assuming. Is that accurate? And that's whether you choose to do that or not, that's the world you're stepping into to evaluate this option. Otherwise, it's not any different than workforce reduction. This is based on the services that you keep and the services you eliminate or reduce drastically, correct?
Well, I think Carmel needs to make one or two statements, then about the blue lines on the graph, and how that was arrived at, and what that represents, very quickly.
Well, what we wanted to do, the question comes up consistently about where the general fund is. So what we did is we wanted to put together a simple graph that everybody could understand, including the public. And so that's what you have here, is, is where the general fund is. And I, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody, we, we pretty much know where all of our general fund is. So, um, again, you know, if you look at the red bar, and then you try to add up, even some of the blue bars to add up to the red, it's very difficult to get to six million dollars. And we could certainly look at, you know, additional steps as far as consolidating administration of some departments to save a few hundred thousand here and there. Everything here, it, there's more than just staff and programs here. You can see we have the miscellaneous budget, we have the Teter plan listed, we have every, uh, every budget unit that gets discretionary general fund is listed. And one would question if the Teter discretionary or not, what's in miscellaneous? But this will show, show this board and the public where the general fund is.
Could, could I have a depth, you know, just an idea of what's in miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous has some payments, some annual payments, and, um, I don't think the others.
I just can't remember from the budget time, I know it's listed.
The bids, aren't they?
I think we have, no, I don't think the bids, it's, uh, I think Resource Conservation District, there are some others.
I see.
And we could find that out for the whole miscellaneous, right? And there's the, the Southwest Board of Department, which I think is about half a million, that's in miscellaneous. Miscellaneous is about, um, about seven, somewhere between... Miscellaneous is about, about seven, somewhere between 700,000 and $1 million.
Okay.
And your next, your next slide is?
Supervisor, accountable, sorry.
Yeah, you know, if this is truly supposed to reflect general fund discretionary, we're looking at the jail. We are mandated, or the sheriff is mandated to provide the jail service. There are mandated staffing levels. So, and I think our budget discussions in the past have been along the lines, the jail really is in someplace that we can cut because it is a mandated staffing level for a mandated service.
Well, we have the board of supervisors in here too, and we have the executive office in here. We have...
Well, you could cut us, and how long would it take before people know?
Cut me too.
Maybe we could just eliminate elections.
When we begin to talk about our discretionary general fund, and I think discretionary is subjective at times, so I agree with you there. But this is really where the money goes, and I, and so...
Well, I know, but we also have DOC is 3 million, because it's considered the equivalent of a special district, although there's some question about that, one of my colleagues tells me. You know, it's not on here, but it is general fund.
But very little.
3 million is it?
Well, I think what we've got in this mix are mandated services and some that are not mandated services. But the facts about it is it's supposed to represent the general fund, draws on all these different services. But it's up to debate and discussion on which ones are mandated.
So the question, let's make sure Carmel's...
I'm with you.
No, no, I know, I want to make sure you didn't have some other information you didn't find.
Yes, the next slide is what we used on February 15, which was the general fund enhancement possibility. We're non-discriminatory here with general funds. These are your programs, and then these were some programs and then some outside funding that we've given. And what we had talked about on this chart was possible options to redirect general fund. It's a total of four or five years, a total of 6.9 million of general fund. The board approved the Business Improvement District ordinance on the 15th, so this essentially is off the list. The Williamson Act, even if the board voted to eliminate the Williamson Act, if we were thinking 1213 when we did this, how quickly things change, we'd probably be looking maybe at 2014 before we'd actually achieve the savings from the Williamson Act. And everything else, you can see what it adds up to. I mean, I think, you know, getting back to the bar chart, this is a very difficult exercise. And I think that really it's a courageous exercise to do this publicly. And this is really what we do on a daily basis, to try to float this county and figure out how we can continue the services that we have. This bar chart is, I think, the reality that we're dealing with, and really where the general fund goes. And what I've tried to do with it is to look at it and say, okay, we have a dozen departments here. If we took those departments and consolidated half of them, could we, how much could we save in administration that could mitigate that 6 million dollars? And it just seems that, you know, it's a high number. And because we have so many vacancies, we've lost so many staff, we've cut positions, we've reduced our services, there's very little, very little...
We eliminated the Williamson Act, it could be a possible $2.5 million county savings. First of all, the contract Williamson Act with all these landowners with the county, and I would venture to say that we even proposed elimination of the Williamson Act. The first thing, any cost savings you might achieve through that, for the first 10 years, you're gonna spend a lot more money on litigation, because it's a pretty sound contract, at least for nine more years, with people that are in there. So I don't think, I don't really see the elimination.
Yeah, no, if you eliminate it, all you would be doing is you'd be issuing notices of non-renewal to all property owners, and it would take, it would be a nine-year rollout.
Yeah, exactly. But, I mean, it's been mission, it's about a budget saving strategy to the elimination, and that's, yeah, way out there, even if that was a possibility.
You'd start seeing savings.
You would start seeing savings immediately in year one of the rollout, but you're right, it would take...
To get to the full amount.
Well, I contend you wouldn't, because I think the litigation costs you would have to defend yourself for, because it's a pretty strong contract.
No, 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 no.
But let me, before we get, I think there's a, what are, in terms of the timeframe we're looking within, I want to understand this. We're looking at that, unless you take on some of the really big budget items, you're looking at $300,000 less than that, is that correct?
Yes.
In the short, for the period that we're looking at. If you took all of those changes, unless you're willing to take on, you know, the big budget items and that gets you into the discussion about core service, all of that, that's the lens that you have to apply when we look at service elimination. Say, well, how much can we really gain through service elimination by itself? That's what we're gonna, and this hopefully gives you the actual financial data to look at. Say, where would it have to come from? How much can we actually achieve? You have to have a reality, I know you already do, but everybody, the audience and everybody needs to have reality when you weigh that as a strategy. And I think as soon as John gets back, when she's coming, we should do that work. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go through it. So can you, Tim, can you get us to the chart? Thank you. So you're seeing, if we're trying to compare it again about what it would take to get that size of a service elimination, through service elimination, the same 6 million dollars, okay? Now you're looking at the issue of going through my criteria.
But again, we're predicated on, we eliminate the service, we eliminate positions.
Oh, yeah.
Provide the service.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So potentially, that gets us to the same place that workforce reduction does.
If you...
If we followed through.
If you're willing to do what it's gonna take, looking at those actual numbers, that's some huge work. And it's only gonna come from a couple of areas evidently. Is that accurate?
Yeah, and we're already cut to the bone, pretty much.
That's what you're evaluating. Are, you know, how feasible is it that you're gonna actually get?
Well, are we really asking how feasible is it? Because on the first one, we were saying, now, this isn't whether you'd actually do it, but if you did it, what if that would have?
So, evaluate it.
But that's the same thing. It's not whether we think we would do it. If we did it, what if, would it rate a 10 or a 7 or what?
And what it's gonna, and how it's gonna impact, all the other variables. So if you actually made those changes in service elimination, you...
It'd be a 10 for the first column.
Is that right? Second column, reserves, it's probably gonna be very similar for a while, right? Rate a reserve, if you did, what it was gonna take to do that. And it's very clear what you'd have to do to get there.
Well, I think to John's point, John McCollum, if it did it in workforce reduction, it is in essence really going to be primarily workforce reduction, it probably gives us a 10.
Yeah, and reduce unemployment costs, zero. Is that correct? Same logic, is that what you're saying?
It's gotta be real low.
Improve counties' credit rating. It's gonna start changing on some of these other variables, obviously. Those would probably be the same, correct?
Be the 7.5, is that what we had?
Yeah, whatever we had. Okay, improve the local economy, promote jobs, business, and a healthy environment. When you're considering now the actual departments, the changes that you would actually have to make if you did those, what would be the impact of that through service elimination? It's not job elimination, it's actual service elimination.
About four, four or five.
Would it be the same as cutting positions as?
It'd be pretty close.
Well, we're saying it largely is the same as cutting positions, except maybe they would be more targeted.
But they're targeted to actually eliminating services.
So maybe private sector.
You would be having to eliminate the services based on this chart, correct? It's not just positions across the board, it would be...
Right, but the effect of eliminating the service, we are going to eliminate the position.
That is right, that's absolutely correct. But so, when you look at your criteria, and I'm just trying to make sure everybody's looking at it the same way, would it have any different impact than just eliminating jobs across the board? You're actually eliminating services, so the issue is promote jobs, business, and a healthy environment.
I don't think, though, Steve, anyone qualified on number one, workforce reduction is eliminating positions across the board. We didn't define it, we didn't really talk about it.
You said it was the general funded positions.
That's correct.
The 300, probably 300, that's what you did, qualified within that.
Right, but we didn't say across the board, like all general departments.
I'm just trying to make sure you're weighting. This would be, you said these services would go or be drastically reduced, more than other services, I'm assuming. If you're talking about service elimination. Unless I'm way off base by understanding what that means.
I'd say five, I think it's gonna be.
You think it's the same?
Sure.
Okay, five, let's go to the next one. Improve customer service satisfaction.
Say around four.
Okay.
It's very similar.
It's gonna be very similar, see if it has any difference.
It could be a one or two. Again, depending on which decisions we take with services, but it's gonna be low.
Okay. Maintain core services, would you be able to maintain core services?
No, that's totally opposite. I mean, service elimination, maintain core services, they're exactly the opposite.
The question is, would you be impacting core services by service?
Well, let's assume that some are not four.
About four again?
Well, it'd be, how different would it be from the workforce reduction, which we said was gonna be a six?
Right.
Because again, we were, then we were thinking that the layoffs would be based on some kind of prioritization.
Well, you were, or maybe others, but you particularly. So this is service.
I just want to throw something in, maybe this would help define it a little bit more so than workforce reduction. Some of our services have been under contract as well. So, you know, when you talk service elimination, you are eliminating the whole service. It may not be staff, it may be staff under contract. And you have to think services and supplies, it could be the whole ball elapsed, not just eliminating four or five positions. So it's actually a greater, it could actually be a greater service elimination than a workforce reduction.
So that'd justify this being a lower number to decide, like again, you were saying, four or five.
Four, okay, four. Okay, let's move to this next one, which is minimize county employee job loss. That's probably very similar, I would guess, but I don't know, is there a logic in that?
Well, again, if part of it was getting rid of consultants and so forth, it'd be, it'd be higher than zero.
It could be.
Probably still low.
So what do you say, again, and are you getting tired?
Three, maybe? Three or four?
Two, three, four.
Two.
Two, two, three? Three's fine, two, okay, let's go with two and a half. And let's just move forward, let's get this one done.
Yeah.
Good for the short and the long term, service elimination.
Maybe short term, I have my doubts about long.
I don't think service elimination is good for anything.
No, but again, using the same logic.
But that's what we're supposed to be in.
But again, using the same logic we did for the workforce reduction.
These would actually be services that had been eliminated.
It's still probably gonna be a six or a seven. I mean, how different would it be from workforce reduction?
I think services are actually common versus just employees doing some of those things. It is a different thing, but it does...
If we lay off a quarter of the staff that is doing these things, under workforce reduction, services are gonna be gone, certainly.
I think, I agree, I think it's pretty similar, so I'd say a six or a seven.
Okay. Same for everybody? Okay, so give it the same number then, just if you're thinking about it the actual same way. And increases efficiency, is that any different?
Well, you eliminate services and you're focusing on a core group of services. Maybe they'd be more efficient, I don't know.
I wonder now we came up with such a mind order for the first call.
That's a good one. They're both pretty low, aren't they? Are they different? That's the question. Want to compare them equally?
Probably not really.
Kendall, any different for you?
I, you know, I think, again, it depends on how it plays out, with how you have the discussion about core services when you're talking about service elimination. So there's a lot of caveats, so I don't know.
Pick a number. So if it's, I mean, is it any different than this one? I mean, so you're comparing in your life, in your mind?
Probably five, I'd say, probably nine.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time getting my mind around this whole category, because I don't know which services are gonna be eliminated. You know, when you say service elimination, can I look down this list and I go, okay, what are we gonna get rid of? How about planning and building? See, Nash is here. How about, you know, general services? Well, I don't think so. I mean, so it's hard for me to wrap my brain around it, because I don't know what services are gonna get eliminated.
Well, if you added up $6 million is what you have to do, that's what you have to get.
Well, and the only, you know, the big banana is public protection. You know, that's 60-plus percent of it. So that's gonna take an enormous whack to begin with. And then, but see, a lot of these other ones, if you pare them down anymore, you might as well get rid of the departments. So that's kind of where my head is at, you know? You've got all these little bitty things, but what's the number? What's the number?
Well, what you're saying, what you're really saying, I think, is how, I'm not sure of the words yet, how realistic is that strategy period, is what I'm hearing.
It's, from my point of view, I have, it hasn't been proved to me that it's an efficient strategy. And John said earlier, well, that's because this board's not good at prioritizing. But I don't know if I quite agree with that, it's not quite the way I look at it. I think, you know, what we've been doing in this county for the last three years has been cutting, cutting, cutting. You know, we've cut, what, 400 positions? You know, so are, I mean, if we've really got things that we can eliminate, which department do you want to eliminate? I don't know, I can't find one.
I don't think anybody complains.
I mean, general fund, special.
But I heard it's for revenue, but I think it's a, this is a good conversation.
If you're looking for a non-controversial station.
Yeah. You might just, you might just give it the same number, because, but you might be talking about, you know, how much sense does this actually make, this approach?
Does that approach?
And it's good to weigh them out objectively, and you'll see, I don't know, these two might come out, you know, they're gonna be very close, and it might not be the same as that. We're gonna wait and find out, and we'll have to look at this.
Let's get a number so we can hear from the public.
Yeah, we should give the public.
Yeah, we definitely want to. So you want to go with the same number or what?
Maybe we should give them each a four, the one above it.
If you won't add it, mathematically, leave it the same.
Leave it the same.
Five, okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna compute these and see what we came up. They could be identical numbers, I don't know, but they might not be across these, because you totaled these. So what you do is you take this number and you weigh it by its weighting factor and you come up with a total point for each one of these and you total across. Does that make sense?
We're gonna have to have an analysis.
No, we've got it done. Better we have it done. So let's open it up to the public.
So Steve, I think I actually will ask you to facilitate the public engagement. So do you have an idea how we can do that? We have seven minutes.
No, wait a minute, give them one.
Well, we have five more minutes. Do you want the scores first or later?
Scores would be great.
So where would you like the public, does the public stand whether, how do you want?
Maybe they can where they are if they're comfortable, that's fine.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to you to handle this.
Okay, please.
Well, my name is Gerald Rhodes, and most of you know me, I'm a senior advocate. And like John said, you are elected to protect, provide, and to serve the community, which is the area which you're serving as politicians. And I'll soon be 71 years old, and in my life I've seen that that's a hard position for politicians, because once money comes in, it seems that this is the quickest way to spend it. They do, yeah, I'm talking about exactly this, this is what works out, works out in this, because you figure out some way to do it. I don't envy their position today, but they're not in a position as businessmen. That's reason, that's why they hire people like Carmel here, and the city hires people like Chamberlain to help them reach these decisions. But remember this much, you still must provide for the public. Over the years, I think you've added too many jobs, too many positions in the county, which they've... the county, which they fulfill. They're, they try, when times are great, everybody jumped on board, but times are not great. And this is when you're going to have to make some real hard, tough decisions. I don't envy you people, I don't envy you, it's like I tossed this plum out of the construction business, and they did, they priced Dinkers plum out of the construction business, exactly like that.
What would you do?
I, I, I would tell you personally, I, I hate to see jobs eliminated. I, I'd rather see some of the people that work for the county come forward and renegotiate, reset the things down, rather than losing services that provide the services for the people. Yeah, they have, I'm sorry to say, our lady the other day says, was one of the public services, says she could, she didn't think she could buy on 65,000 a year. But I know people living out there are getting by on less than 8,000, 10,000 a year. So these are my concerns. And when you cut these services, you cut it to these people. That's my concern.
I mean, get as many people as we can.
Yeah, Karen Wandering, the Messino County Youth Project. You may have had some of this discussion at your first meeting, which I missed, but it, for me, when you talk about core services, it's a little confusing, because I think there's a difference between mandated services and core services, they're not necessarily the same. And mandated services doesn't mean mandate that the county do it, it means mandate it that it, county makes sure that it gets done. So I don't know if that's a discussion you've had, but certainly when you get more into that topic, I think that would be a helpful part of the discussion. The other thing I'm not seeing up here in terms of criteria, I'm wondering about, is ability to leverage other funding. Because I think when you talk about service cuts, for example, there are service cuts and there are service cuts. And some, some positions, for example, in the human service area have the ability to leverage quite an amount of other federal and state funding. And so on that level, I think that's a really important criteria when you get to that level. And to answer Steve's question, I certainly, I have spoken to you several times over the years about my strong desire to see the county and the health and human service area look out, look at contracting out as much as possible in health and human services. And I've made those arguments before, and I don't want to take the time to make that argument now, but certainly, that's one place where I would really encourage you to continue to go forth.
Thank you, Karen. I'm sure there are some other folks who would like to comment on anything about this, or any feedback.
Yes, Beverly Dutra. First of all, I'd like to say you have a real morale problem with personnel. And as somebody that started a business here 32 years ago, and has dealt with the county through that period, I have never dealt with a bad county employee, whether it's environmental health, or planning, or the assessor, they have all been terrific. So I'd like to see you sustain your people as much as you can. And in that sense, I think one category missing on that is looking very vigorously internally at what is spent on county budget items. I think there's, I've looked at the budget, and I think there's a lot of wasted spending, places where people could make do, could give back. For example, $45,000 in paper for the social services in HHR. That's a lot of paper every year after year after year. Where is it going? I mean, they're just those kinds of examples, and I'd like to see some tough looking at your budget. Secondly, you need to define core services. You really need to do that before you go forward. I'd like to suggest possibly there are reductions in top salaries that could be done. And then lastly, I look at this graph, and to me, it's another manipulation of graphs. I call them statistics rather than statistics. If you take county government here, the actual government, governance things, there are 16 categories there. If you started lumping those together, they figure up to things that go far beyond the sheriff and the jail. So there's a different way of looking at it if you look at government. And I think you need to get into your governmental offices and do some cutting there. And, and I very much appreciate this process and you participating in it. I think it's going to lead to good things. Thank you.
One second, please, yeah?
Well, I mean, this has been very interesting, and I, too, feel very, very bad for you that we're still in this situation. And I know that in terms of the frontline workers and the employees in Messino County, it's just dragged on and on and on, and it continues to, to really hit in terms of the morale issue. So we have to sort of make some decisions, you, obviously, are fearless leaders, have to make these decisions. It seems like the four-day week, in terms of it gets there partially, you're going to have to, if you did that and you did one or two other things, might get you there to the $6 million probably with the least amount of pain. And I did want to say, I run some 24-hour facilities, and you could probably even look at the four, the 36-hour week for the 24-hour, if you have a really good scheduler, which is a talent, but you could do that. There's no, it doesn't mean by definition just because you're running the jail, or just because you're running a 24-hour facility, that you can't also look at that for those positions, so.
Well, let's make sure everybody else has a chance, and then you're.
By non-efficiency. Yes.
And then you're more than welcome to. But I want to make sure, anybody else have any, any thoughts? Please, and I'll turn it back to you.
Well, one thing you've got to remember, when you do a 36-week, you're going to have one day off. And one, one day off is going to be shutting lights and gas and getting stuff off these buildings. I don't know how much savings you're going to get off of that, so that might be figured in as a factor.
So that concludes, concludes the public comment section. Okay, we'll go to Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I, I, you know, hearing defined core services, I think this is something we talked about also in the first workshop. But I don't want two others to get lost. And this is on revenue generation. When you look at this chart, and I think Supervisor Pinches talked about the tax collector. You'd probably get good customer satisfaction.
Yeah.
But for revenue generation, we have departments that services by them leads to us not having our costs increased. So for instance, legalities, you go to county council. And then also, many of the departments, I think we have to color code them or whatever, because they are revenue generating departments. Assessors, I mean, it's, it's true.
Oh, the scores?
I do too.
For scores, okay, sure, well, let's briefly look at that, and then we're going to have to wrap this up.
It's 403.5 for workforce reduction.
What was it?
403.5.
Oh, because you have a multiplying.
Well, the way that I understand how you do the multiplying, the 399.25 for the service elimination.
Which don't go about that anymore, I statistically.
And 486 for the.
36-hour week.
Yeah, 486, that's.
Oh, mine's, and the scores are up there, so you can see.
So that starts to give you the value of going through this, and more is difficult.
So, of the three that you've scored, the Monday through Thursday, or 36-hour full-time employee was the highest score, 486. And just as, as you all had identified, service elimination and workforce reductions came in very close, 403.5 and 399.25.
Essentially, what it's saying, even though there's tons of ambiguity, and I understand how difficult it is to, to weight these, that we're looking for the best weave to maximize the benefits and minimize the deficits across your criteria. And you probably will see, if we do all of these, and there may be others that you want to evaluate, that there's probably a couple that just stand out, that, that's the, the way to try to focus your energies. And then you can have the more detailed conversation of what does that look like inside of each of those. But so far, just based on this, the 30-hour work week would be way ahead of the pack. That's right.
Supervisor Pinches.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, Mrs. Dutra spoke, you know, basically what she's saying, I think that departments need to look at the little things, and certainly, every year the, the, and here in the near future, the CEO is going to give the department heads basically a budget instructions, which will come up with some sort of a reduction, and hopefully that addresses the little, little line items. But the little line items, when you take it cumulatively, do mount up to large numbers, and they, they can't be ignored. You know, Mark Twain said, far as statistics, he says, there's lies, and there's damn lies, and then there's statistics. And that's, that's really the truth, but, you know, it's really kind of ironic here, there's something I've been preaching for a long while here. Really, our long-term solution, not necessarily our short-term solution, but our long-term solution to the budget of this county is going to start actually here in about another hour with the review of the UVAP, you know? And that's where, that's where really the, the rubber meets the road. I mean, if we're not going to be interested in more true revenues, and I'm not talking about increase in taxes or fee increases, because those are, when it comes to your general public and the general economy, those are actually regressive. But what we really need in this county is more assessed valuation and more sales tax, and I guess people will say, well, yeah, that's, that's growth, and some people don't like that, anything. But we can't have it all. And if we're going to have a long-term strategy, it's going to have to come with true revenue enhancement. And that means increase, assessed valuation, and the ability to increase our sales tax revenues. And that's just, to me, that's been real clear for years, and that's a real problem. We can sit here and start trying to deal with the results, but we've got to start attacking the problem.
Supervisor Brown, do you?
Yes, I, I just wanted to comment on the paper cost. I'd be happy to share with you how much paper I took home from Thursday night. That was my homework for the three days before today's meeting. And much of that paperwork was because of all the legalities and mandated postings we have to do, and what's provided for one of us has to be provided in all five, as well as both parties to some of the cases. So it's just like, oh my gosh, we'd love to do that.
But you do have a very expensive commu, computer system, which I think probably isn't fully utilized. And I would love to see the county, the county employees that are involved with that get you all up to speed to reduce that paper. And I know you do have big paper loads, I've seen them, and they're.
Don't give the cumulative cost of our computer systems, because it's a staggering number.
I know, I know.
Okay, so we want to wrap this up, so we have a dinner recess. If it's okay with the board, we'll continue supervisor's reports till next week, unless there's something pressing.
So then our regular board meeting will be adjourned.
That's correct.